Two separate meeting minutes to take up. The regular meeting, we'll start with the regular meeting minutes from November 18th, 2019. Does anyone have any corrections or additions or changes? I do not either.
I didn't have any. I would move to accept the minutes from November 18th.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay. And the other minutes are from the November 26th, 2019 joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee. So Rob and Bevy and I were there and I tried to summarize in the minutes the revenue forecast. I'm sure we'll talk a little bit more about that later in the meeting when we get to our preliminary budget discussion. But if I could get a motion, unless, does anyone have any changes to the?
You captured it well, I think.
Excellent.
I'll motion that we accept these special notes from the Advisory and Board of Select in a meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Three zero.
Abstention.
And two abstentions.
But you can-
I figured you were going there. I just figured I would.
But you know, as a matter of public, you can-
I could, yeah.
You know you have that option.
Yeah, I did.
Which I choose to do because I trust my colleagues on the board that they-
It is fine either way, but it is good to-
No, but I mean, just so that people under-
Yep.
Know that there is an option.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. So we're going to, we have a teaching and learning highlight on tonight's agenda, but we have postponed that because of the weather. We didn't want our staff out on the roads and we also are trying to move our meeting along so that we can get home safely before the weather gets any worse. So we are going to have our teaching and learning highlight on technology integration and innovative instructional strategies on December 16th. So it'll give us something to look forward to.
That's good.
And we have next up, an additional FHS overnight travel item to approve.
Yes, so this one is one that we talked about at the last meeting as an anticipated one based on the performance of our cheerleaders. So congratulations to them. And so this is anticipated if they are to go to the Orlando Convention Center and that would be in the spring.
March 19th to the 23rd.
Yes.
Okay. It says 2019, but that should be 2020.
Yes, it should be, yes.
Just to be-
Thank you.
So the dates will be March 19th, okay.
To the 2020.
To 2020.
2020. Okay.
That's almost spring.
In Florida, it will be spring.
It's a nice time for Florida.
Very good. Would anyone like to make a motion? If there are no additional questions?
I'll make a motion to accept the anticipated overnight travel for the cheerleaders to Orlando.
Thank you, Brent. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you. All right. Moving right along. We discussed at our last meeting, the 2020, 2021 school calendar and the different options, the traditional post-Labor Day start on September 8th and the, because it is such a late Labor Day, the pre-Labor Day start on September 1st. And I thought we would continue the discussion and hopefully vote on the calendar tonight.
And just to chime in, so at the community coffee hour that Allison and I host, we brought this up to them as well and the consensus was to start on September 1st before Labor Day with that group. And then also, I was at one of the banquets and I had some parents come up to me at the banquet and say, "I know you're not asking, but just by the way, we prefer the before Labor Day start." So, you know, those side comments as well.
I will also add that I ran into several people in Stop &amp; Shop and the paper store and other various stops of mine over the past couple of weeks and uniformly, people were in favor of the September 1st start. I didn't have any phone calls at home other than the reporter from WBZ Radio who wanted to chat about our calendar decision making.
We're cutting it.
So, yeah. Please go ahead.
If I may, I'm curious as to if people want to discuss, I'm just curious what your reasons are mostly.
For?
To discuss?
I mean, yeah, for whatever preference people have. I like hearing people's rationale, that's all.
My rationale is that we are here for the students and that we should provide the best situation in which students can learn. Optimal would be at the beginning of the fall. Prior, we encourage so many people to stretch themselves and take AP. I mean, one example, all from sophomores on, our AP program has just expanded. They need that week of study, not-
They don't need June.
Not, no. They don't need it on a hot, suffocating day on the second floor of an un-air-conditioned high school building.
Right.
Well, actually, they won't be able to study in June. The tests are given in AP.
No, but I know. And for the other-
It's a week lost.
It is a week lost, so.
It's a whole week lost for the students. And it's a better learning situation for all of the students.
And for our elementary and middle school students as well, that time in June is-
They've had a difficult-
...... that last week in June to be studying, so.
And then if we get five snow days, if this is any indication, you know what I mean? You know, that just bumps it to the very end of June.
Yeah. I agree with everything.
I mean, educationally, I would not consider anything else.
And I am less bothered by the earlier start because we're still in September. I mean, if we were bumping it, you know, into August-
Like 25th of August.
Yeah. That would be, I might want to put the brakes on them, but September 1st, we started school on September 2nd this year, so it's really almost the same calendar.
And to be honest with you, there are a bulk of our students involved in athletics-
Yeah.
-and in music that are already here.
Yeah.
The families are already at home because of the extracurricular activities and the quality that we encourage, the level of performance we encourage all of them to reach.
I know, I sat with a couple of parents who have elementary and middle school students at the YMCA Legends Ball a couple of weeks ago and they also were in favor of it because of childcare and because, you know, camps start that last week in June and, you know, being able to put your child in camp then and have your, everyone go, the schedule seems better aligned.
And they've already had eight or nine weeks of vacation.
Right. But I do want to bring out, so I agree with what you said about the extra week. However, looking at the calendar, it is only three days. So I'm not saying that I don't agree with September 1st, but to bring up the argument of the extra time available for prepping for something that happens in the spring, realistically, it's only three days.
Three days and not five.
And now that it's three days, probably one and a half are actually productive. So I just want to be clear that it's not-
It's fair.
Not a major impact.
Either way.
And I agree with you. I think to one point that does make a difference, all of the team-building activities and kind of going over the syllabus for the course, it does provide, so when you hit that first full week, you're really off and running because you have some of that other-
Right.
Stuff behind you.
But that happens anyway, whether it would happen on September 1 or on September 8 or whatever it is.
Correct.
That, I mean, I prefer, I prefer the September 1 start date.
Richard, did you want to weigh in?
So I'm very compelled by the end of the year. That's the one that jumps out to me very personally. When you say the 21st being the potential end date with possibly five snow days taking us into the 28th, the higher twenties, I find that to be incredibly problematic. That's my personal feeling. I agree, you said earlier that many people are leaving where summer camps and all those things. They're starting up in June nowadays, so that's just the way of our world now too. So I'm very compelled by that. I will tell you, the most challenging thing in the calendar of that draft for me is the teachers coming back that additional week earlier because of their three days. And that's just a new one on me because they have to come back a whole week before the students conceptually. But it is what it is. And so I think of that whole thing too, but it's that 21st of June that rings in my mind very strongly. That's a very late ending for school. And if you get that bad winter and take us to 28, that's-
Or further.
That's an incredibly wild number in my personal thinking. I'm not sure I've ever taught to the 28th in my 23 years in education. We've had late ones, right?
We've had a few late.
But I can't remember.
Yes, we have.
I can't remember many 28ths and 29s and 27s. Those are not seen very often at all.
It's less fun.
Well, it's a month after seniors' leave. It's a month after seniors' leave at the high school level. It's just, it's just a lot of extra time in June. It's just, I don't, not comfortable with it.
So your point about the teachers, we have had talks with our teachers' union and, you know, they're on board with this from what we were told last, at our last meeting, so.
That was going to be my question, but you said last meeting, which I thought was very compelling as well.
Yes.
That was the thing that, you know, having been a teacher, that was like, ooh, that's early. But you had assured us that the teachers are on board and that was a convincing one for me. So if I thought the teachers were up and down on that, I think I might have been going a little bit nervous.
No, Allison and I met with them and they took it back to their executive board and even felt confident right there at the table in saying, "We know where they are. We don't even feel, we said, nope, still take it back to your E-Board."
Yeah, good, good.
And so they did, but it didn't change.
I think that's very strong support for that. So the teachers are all on board for their thing and we got the end of the year, that's where I sit. My thoughts.
Mm-hmm. Rob, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I don't, so I actually just, because I appear to be contrarian tonight, I actually had several people say to me they would prefer to start after Labor Day.
Well, then we're all different.
Right. So it's just, not that I had people like calling me up or emailing or anything, but the couple of people that had heard about it had said, but-
Was that just personal preference? Did you gather from them?
Yeah.
Just a person, because they tend to go away for Labor Day, I think, and it's a matter of, but I grew up, so I grew up in the South, so we started in the middle of August.
Right there with you.
And then in the middle of May, so.
That's right.
You had June off, so.
Yeah.
We're talking June 21st, yeah.
We are the only section in the entire country that goes as late as we do in June.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody else starts, a lot of them start right after August 15th in many, many parts of the country.
We also have two week-long breaks.
Mm-hmm.
They do the week in March.
Yeah, as opposed to the single week in March, which is more common.
Right. Brent, did you have anything you wanted to add to the discussion?
Not honestly, my opinions are in line with what I've heard a lot of people say regarding the earlier start. It's just, from personal experience with students and myself, it's nicer teaching than it is in late June. And whether or not it's actually hotter, it just feels hotter. Probably not hotter. No, I was actually, actually, if you saw me staring at my computer screen here, I was actually just looking at the weekly average temps. It's pretty comparable.
About the same.
But the thing is that you can't control, because of snow days, you can't control the end date. You can't control the start date.
Right.
And that wildcard of going into that last week of June is just counterproductive and so, anyway, in my opinion.
Well, would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I move to approve calendar option number two wherein students return before Labor Day as presented.
Number first.
Oh, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the pre-Labor Day start? That's five zero zero. All right. Thank you. Did you want us, I know we had discussed, did you need, I think we have consensus that we had discussed adding the additional dates to promote, you know, knowledge diversity and understanding of traditions.
Yeah.
So just wanted to make sure, since we still have this in our packet, so we don't need to have that be part of the motion, just to make the consensus-
By consensus.
-that the committee is in agreement that this is a good idea.
That we become aware of all that, yes.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you for that.
Excellent people.
Calendar set. And I appreciate us getting this done in early December too, so that people can plan accordingly for vacations and camps and know what, when the start date is.
Very much so.
And it also helps us from a professional development standpoint, because if we bring speakers in for August, we have to book them a year in advance in many cases. So knowing now is really advantageous for professional development purposes. Well, and I will also add that our PD committee plans a very well-attended summer institute that goes the last week of June. And it hampers other districts, a lot of other districts look forward to it and it would hamper their ability to come if we were running into that.
That way.
So that would be the last of the consideration, but it's still a consideration.
Okay. Well, good.
That's good to know though, Allison.
Thank you. All right. So the next item on our agenda is the School Committee Operating Protocols document. We had a nice discussion about this at our meeting a couple of weeks ago and I tried to add the edits in that we discussed at the table. They are highlighted on the draft document that you all have, but I just want to make sure that I didn't leave anything out. And I know Amy helped me with her notes, so between the two of us, I think we covered everything.
No, I think you got everything that I saw.
It looks good to me.
Okay. All right.
Would you entertain a motion?
I would like to entertain a motion and then perhaps if we adopt this, then maybe at our next meeting, you can bring a formal and we can sign it. We can all sign it. Without the yellow. Okay. Yeah.
I move to accept the Foxborough School Committee/Supervisor operated protocols as edited and presented here tonight.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Richard. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero zero.
Excellent.
Thank you all for your collaborative effort on those.
Thanks for leading.
No, really, I appreciate it.
All right. Now, this brings us to our Foxborough Public Schools FY '21 preliminary budget discussion with Mr. Yuthan and Dr. Beridos.
Folks, mind if I move?
Not at all. You won't be able to see if you don't.
Or you won't. I don't.
So this preliminary discussion this evening is going to be more of, it is very preliminary in discussion. We're really early compared to this time last year when we presented and with the selectments meeting just taking place on Tuesday night, this past Tuesday night, and getting our direction from the town, we needed that information and then we'll go forward here. So what we wanted to do this evening was to, the timeline here, there's a couple of things that we need to put on the calendar, which would be the School Committee Subcommittee finding a date there. And then we don't have our date for the AdCom yet, so that's something that will be forthcoming. But as far as our timeline moving forward, we've already had the joint town meeting that's taken place. We had the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen last week. And so here we are at our preliminary discussion with you. And so this is very preliminary. We are going to frame this in two different areas. It really comes down to what our thinking and what we're working on right now, and it's two things. It's enrollment and staffing that we're looking at and then it's also looking at special education and some things that are taking place. So to frame that, the Board of Selectmen at that meeting, they presented or really kind of put forth a 3.5% leveled services with limited enhancements. So when we look at a 3.5% with leveled services, just with our salary, where our staff are now and with our expenses just moving forward, we're at $1,264,200.
For an increase.
For an increase.
Yeah, that would be the limit of what our budget could increase. That does not necessarily account for those items that Amy just said as far as salary.
This is the limit?
That's the 3.5% of our, of increasing our budget from last year to this year. It would, that would represent the 3.5%.
Okay.
When it's, sorry, just to clarify, and that covers contractual?
Doesn't cover, it would have to cover everything.
It would have to.
In other words, this is the number that we have to work.
This is the number we're working with, with the town in terms of looking at the pie.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So what we wanted to frame for you this evening was looking at our enrollment and staffing and kind of do a review of what has taken place during this school year so far for FY '20 and some changes that have to take place in the enrollment. We know that over the years, our enrollment has shifted and it has shifted in many places where we have, at the elementary level in particular, we'll have teachers every year that are moving. Maybe they taught first grade, they're moving to second grade. Our kindergarten enrollment is really fluid. That starts January 7th in 2020, but we really won't have a good handle on our kindergarten numbers. It continues to change throughout the summer.
Yeah.
So that's a really hard part. And that's what happened this year, where we ended up adding a kindergarten at the Taylor this year. So we have three kindergartens when we typically had two. And then we have an additional kindergarten at the IGO, which we've had four in the past. We've actually had even five at a time or two, but traditionally, but we had gone down to three. We were, we had to increase by one. But when we looked at our fourth grade at the IGO, we have numbers this year that are, so we went to three classes. We have 23, 24, and 24 in each of those classes because we had a greater need at the Burl for our kindergarteners because we had 24 kids sitting in each of those classes. So kindergarten, that is really high for kindergarten. And if we had one more move-in, which that's what's been taking place, more move-ins than what we've seen, say, five years ago. So we had an increase of a kindergarten at Taylor and IGO. We reduced a grade four teacher at IGO but moved that teacher over to the Burl. Because of service delivery and special education, our occupational therapist is a .9. We've needed to increase that person by .1 to be able to fulfill the service delivery based on IEPs, otherwise we would not be in compliance. And we would have to contract out, which would cost-
More.
Would cost more, actually. At the Ahearn, based on the enrollments, slight declining over the years and we've seen that two years ago across grade four, we reduced a grade four teacher at each of the three schools. We're now starting to see that move up to the Ahearn. So this year, we reduced by two grade five teachers. We anticipate for next year, then that will move into grade six, where we had new hires this year based on retirements. Last year, we hired long-term subs in anticipation of knowing what our plan has been for the last number of years. So this really has been our plan and our place. We've known that the enrollment and that slight decline each year is going to eventually meet the middle school and then the high school as well. So then at the high school, a .4 nurse, we have a 1.0 nurse. We have a 1.4 at the Ahearn and have for 10-plus years. We've not had the same FTE at the high school. And the acuity of care and the students that we have, whether it's medical, socio-emotional, it has really increased and we needed to make it equivalent to the middle school so that we had that same at the high school. So we've had to put a .4 nurse at the high school based on, and we've watched the data for the last two years, looking at the, you know, coming in for every single, because it's logged, every single visit is logged with our nurses. And so those are the adjustments we've had to make this current school year based on enrollment and then part of, you know, obviously knowing what our plan has been and what it is going forward. As we look for implications for next school year for FY '21, we're really looking at those enrollment numbers. We're looking at every single school, every class, every course that's offered at the middle school, at the high school, and to see what adjustments will be necessary based, again, on that plan that we know the enrollment is slightly declining as it moves forward. Holding expense accounts to our FY '20 budget lines and then we do not have any contracts that are open for this year. Last year, we had a number of contracts, several of them.
That's good.
Bill, anything else to add as far as enrollment and?
No, I think, again, as Amy started off with this, this is something we do on an annual basis. It's somewhat behind the scenes because unfortunately, trying to project today for a kindergarten number that we don't even know yet because they haven't shown up to register, as well as, you know, what we know in classes that are moving, we have, you know, we'll start the school year off and by the end of the school year, we'll easily have 20 move-ins in every given year. The question is, where are they going to be? And how quick are they going to happen? So whether or not we can react from a teacher point of view or not. So I think the, I think the reality is, this is just normal business for us, but obviously wanting to make sure you guys are alerted to the moves that we have to make as we go. As Amy said on the nurse, you know, a lot of issues, but, you know, we have some heavy hitters with diabetes on the high school level that need to be monitored, especially around lunchtime and having just one person there along with other children coming with needs and stuff like that is not always the safest thing. And that's why we had to make the decision to do what was safe for the district as well as the kids. And I think that's the move we made and it seems to be paying off, but we didn't do it without getting a lot of data first. So we were tracking how many visits were coming and when they were coming, what were the priority hours. And again, by having a .4, we made sure that that person was scheduled during the hours we would need him the most. And that has seemed to work, so. But this is business as usual and it's, and it's one of the issues of having over 450 employees, that you really have to be able to be somewhat nimble in making reactions. And some are positives and some are negatives as far as, you know, staffing.
What is the cutoff birth date to enroll in kindergarten?
August 31st.
August 31st, yeah.
How, how old do you have to be by Aug?
Five.
Five.
I have to be five by August 31st.
Right.
Five years ago, and you can talk, even you've been here longer than I have, and five to seven years ago, our teachers weren't moving grade levels so much. And principals at first, oh, they've been teaching, you know, this grade, that's their grade. And, you know, you get really familiar with a curriculum and you don't teach it the same way every year. And so then if you're going to change grade levels, it was big conversations. It's asking for volunteers first to move. Now it's just, people understand, that's just every year, someone's going to be moving a grade based on the ebb and flow of those enrollment numbers.
And as the curriculum director, I found that very distressing because you pour so much PD into people for, but I, and I was like, oh, but what I've realized and coming back from the teachers is, they learn so much about the vertical articulation of the curriculum. That's really benefited them as professionals and as team members, that even I've now relaxed about it because it used to really bother me.
Hidden benefit.
Yeah, it was, yeah. Unexpected outcome.
That's great.
The second component that we wanted to talk about was special education and looking at how our numbers have changed and what the implications are to our budget. So when we think about our in-district programs for our special education students and then those students that are out-of-district placements, when we talk about move-ins, we've had a significant number of move-ins for students that move in and they are then placed in one of our programs. They may have come from a program that was close to out-of-district and we have been able to build programs in-house to keep them in the district because we know that that's ultimately what's best for students if we can have a program that really meets their needs. But then at the same time, we've had a number of students that have moved in that are already out-of-district placements. So as an example, in the last four years, we've had 15 move-ins that have gone into one of our, our programs that we have in-house. And the last-
And when Amy says move-in, we mean move-in that are already in a school system with an IEP that's already targeted them with a need. So it's not a move-in that someone came in in kindergarten and is moving up. We're talking about someone that could be coming in third grade, fifth grade, whatever, but they are already coming with-
With their IEP.
Written requirements that we have to obviously fulfill as well as obviously maintain as we go forward. Sorry.
No, and in those last four years, we've had 11 students that are already out-of-district No, and in those last four years, we've had 11 students that are already out-of-district placements move to Foxborough, and so then we pick that up and they continue in their out-of-district placement. But at the same time, we're, whether they're moving into one of our programs, we're constantly looking to see when the time is at their, you know, whether it's their annual meeting or their three-year review, what's best for the student. Because it could be that maybe they were in a program that was out-of-district for their former district, but were able to provide a program within district. So what you see there on that chart, our, our numbers going back to FY17, so when we look at our in-district programs, back in FY17, we had 67 students. As of next year, we already know the students that will age out at age 22 and then know, for instance, those that might be in pre-K that are going to be moving into one of our programs. So at this point in time, we're going to have a difference of one between right now, we have 87 students, and next year, it's, it's anticipated that we'll have 86 unless others move in that we're not aware of. The out-of-district placement numbers, so at FY17, we had 24 students, and then if we look forward to FY21, or currently this school year, we have 33 out-of-district placements, but we already know of students that are moving here that are out of district that haven't arrived in Foxborough yet.
But they are coming.
Yes.
Yes.
They bought a house, they haven't moved in yet, that type of thing. I think this is, this is one that, that you need to all have a heads up on because it's impacting us this year. The, the reality is, right now, our out-of-district tuition budget is probably overspent by $400,000 to $500,000. And transportation's probably overspent by another $75,000 to $80,000. And so obviously, what we're doing is making adjustments on our expense lines and everything else, you know, to make this work. Now, we don't have to make up all that money because right now, we believe that the state has a program for districts that hit a wall, if you will, of going 25% over their previous years' out-of-district cost, in which you get additional funding from them in the year that you're working in to spend it that way. We will be filing for that at the end of February, beginning of March. Based on where we are, we are very, very close, and to be honest with you, we are, there's a couple of kids that are in evaluation right now that is likely going to happen. It's not, it's not something we're doing for this reason, but it's, it's something that's going to happen no matter what. And that would obviously trigger us being able to get more money this year that will take up some of that pain from this year's budget. But it's, it's something we're already feeling into in FY20, and we're, we, you know, we have the list of kids, we, we track this on a monthly basis and review it on a monthly basis with each student. And as Amy said, you know, we obviously feel that the best for, for all of our students is to be able to educate them within the district, but these are cases where we just do not have either the numbers to be able to create programs or the expertise for the program that needs to be involved for, for a child. And the ironic thing is, of the 33 that are outplaced now, very few are at the same place. So they're targeted to what their special need is, to what school that they're actually placed in. One of the key points to that is, in, in past years, we've had multiple that were residentially placed, meaning they stayed all the time, so we weren't transporting. This year, we only have one that's a residential replacement, so 32, we transport every single day. The average cost of those 32 is somewhere between $25,000 and $27,000 a year for transportation alone. So, and you're looking.
Per student.
Per student. And you're looking at, at programs.
Twenty-seven per student?
Yes. And you're looking at programs that range anywhere from ones like the BIKO that we belong to, which is, again, collaborative of, of most of districts around us, that can range anywhere in the $40,000 range up to 60 or 70, to some of our, our bigger outplacement things are, you know, close to $100,000. So the, the, the money that's spent, you know, in this area is, is, is big, and it can creep up on you very quick. And again, just this year, having four move in, it's something we could never plan for. So again, we're using all of our financial resources internally to manage this. We're, we're, you know, tracking every, you know, possibility we have to get through this, and at this point, you know, we, we feel we'll be able to make all the moves we need to, but fortunately, we know, at this point, we're already planning it. We're not, you know, waiting till the end of the year to try to figure it out. We don't have the luxury, really, of going back to the town and saying this. Now, I will say, and, and, you know, the, not that I find comfort in this, but it's, it is a, an advantage we have that most districts don't have, and that is the philosophy where we always maintain one year of things like circuit breaker and, and abeyance. That is always our safety. That's kind of like the stabilization fund that they've created now for special ed. We've always had that because we've always kept that one year. The problem is, if you ever spend it in a year, you're going to be in trouble the following year, where you'll have no resource to, to fall onto. So, but I think it's kind of critical that this is an area that has been growing on us. It hasn't been just, you know, changes within the district. It's been a lot of, of, you know, external elements hitting us as well as far as coming from other districts. And, and there's no rhyme or reason to that. Obviously, it's not that Foxborough has to treat these children any different than any other town. They're all, everybody, everybody has to treat them the same, so.
We have to follow their IEP.
That's right.
And Dr. Einzel will join us on the December 16th meeting, too.
Oh, good.
Being that special education really is a big component of the budget this year. So if we have further questions, she'll be here with us on the 16th.
That is good. I appreciate that.
So as far as next.
I'm sorry, Dr. Beras, Joe had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I asked him to wait until we were finished with that discussion. Sorry, Joe. I didn't mean to forget you.
I'm good, thank you.
Did you get, have your question?
Yeah, so for, when you mean by in-district programs, they're like PAVE program or the teen program?
Correct.
Or the, IGO, the 8-10 program, right?
Correct.
Or the PAVE middle school, that's a specialized.
You're absolutely right.
What about preschool?
The preschool's an integrated preschool, so we'll have students from preschool that would then move into, it could be the 8-10 program that you're talking about.
When you mean in-district programs, they're not like students that just have ACT-Lab, right?
No.
No.
There's more like specialized.
Specialized, the specialized program to meet their individual needs.
Right.
That's a good question, Joe, it's a good clarification. Thank you. Sorry about that, thank you. Okay.
As far as...
There's a question.
Sorry, I was wondering, what's the, can you just reiterate, the, the state, the state spending will benefit, what, what do you get back from this?
Circuit breakers, it's called circuit breakers.
Okay, it's the circuit breaker.
So basically, circuit breaker has what they call extraordinary relief.
Right.
And, and the extraordinary relief is based on 25%. And I believe if it falls around the same guidelines as the other does, you get about 75% back. But it's all based on how much money they have in the kitty and how many of us have to go after it.
Above that amount, 75% back?
75% of the 25%, roughly.
Got it.
So as compared to the normal circuit breaker, which there is a, a minimum expense that the town has to pay first, roughly $46,000 to $47,000, and then everything above that, there's a split, too. In this extraordinary, it's a split for the whole 25, and they pay their percentage on it. Again, it's been around 75 from what I can tell, but it could be in any given year, more or less, depending on the amount of money that's in the budget for the year and how many people go after it.
All right. So at this point in time, we will continue to look at all of our enrollment numbers. Again, kindergarten is going to be the wild card as far as not knowing if we're going to have, for instance, will we have three at Taylor this year? Will we have three next year? We only have two at Burl this year? Will we have three at Burl next year? Again, it's just, it's a wait-and-see game. So continuing to look at our enrollments, monitor those at all grade levels and courses, then looking at our revenue changes, monitoring those. On December 16th, we'll have a more in-depth review of the budget, and then at the January 27th meeting would be your action item as far as the vote. And then we'll need to get the date from AdCom as far as when.
Questions? Any questions? Thank you for bringing this forward. I know it's, we just had our revenue forecast meeting and joint meeting last week, but this is a good overview and sort of a where are we and where are we headed. I think it was a valuable use of resources. Thank you for that. All right. Next, we have an acceptance of donation. We have two.
Yes, absolutely. So one is for the IGO, which is from the PTO, which is a gift for technology, which you would have heard some of the applications of that tonight if we had our teaching and learning highlight.
Something to look forward to, yes.
That's right, stay tuned. And that was for $5,548.96, and that was from the PTO.
How generous.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept this with gratitude?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from the IGO School PTO for $5,548.96.
Second.
Thank you both. Any further discussion? All those in favor, 5-0-0, and thank you to the IGO PTO.
There you go.
A lot of work into that.
Yes, a lot of fundraising.
Lot of volunteer hours.
And then you have an additional donation, which is from the Foxborough Kickers Club. This is one that you see annually, thanks to the boosters for providing stipends for assistant coaches. And it's for $3,250.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept from the Foxborough Kickers Club the amount of $3,250.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, 5-0-0, and thank you to the Kickers Club.
This is great.
That's for girls.
It was, and I had the opportunity to attend their banquet, and they had such a great season, and just hearing the girls' speeches is my favorite part, and really the role that their team and their coaches and, they just, all, all teams, they had, they had a great season, along with so many of our other teams, too.
Yes, absolutely. All right, well, we are moving along. We're here at Other Matters. Under informational items in your packets, you have an overview of the presentation that Dr. Beras and I attended last Monday on the superintendent evaluation process, the changes to it, and the pilot that, program that we are participating in for this coming evaluation cycle. So, would you like to?
Sure.
Add anything?
So we were at Assabett Valley Technical High School, and there were a lot of school committee members that were there, so I was so happy that Tina was able to join me for that because it was nice to see so many that are willing to pilot this rubric going out of the gate this year. So just as a reminder, it, it's really designed to be more user-friendly for school committee members, where they're condensing, but they're not necessarily like forgetting about so many of the elements within the rubric. But it's having superintendents focus their goal on indicators, not all of the elements that go below. Which I spoke a little bit about the focus indicators back in the fall, but I will revisit that at my mid-cycle review with you in February. But I think it's really an opportunity to see how those goals align with the big picture and with our educator evaluation working group this year as well, where they have 36 or 38 elements under theirs, talking with them even about focus indicators, because it really does say what's most important this year and where we're putting all of our efforts. So that, I think, is really helpful, and it, with the fewer elements, it then clarifies the descriptors that goes with them that should make it easier for all of you when the end of the year comes. And then Tina and I will participate in some surveys and interviews as being part of this pilot group.
Great. I was able to follow a couple of workshops.
Oh, with the school committee superintendent conference? That's great.
That's why I didn't join you on Monday.
So that probably looks familiar to you.
This looks familiar to me.
There are also some video resources on the DESA website that might provide us, you know, with some additional information. But we're really in very good shape, I think, as far as what you've already done and we've already done as a, as a school committee superintendent goals and, very good shape.
We did, we felt that way with some of the questions that were asked by school committee members in particular. We were then kind of leaning, saying, okay, we did that.
Yep.
We, we've already, so, and I think that goes back to Debbie Spinelli, too, being the first penguin out of the gate when we piloted. We had the option of 50% of our teachers participating in ed eval at the same time, and she said, I'll go first, and then we had 100% of our teachers participate. So I think since 2012, it's just something that we take very seriously. We see that it's a process that really helps people grow professionally and personally, and that has put us in a, in a really good place.
I agree. So does anybody have anything else for Other Matters, Amy?
So we have the production of The Aristocrats coming up for the Taylor School this weekend. Elementary report cards, because they're on a trimester, they go out Friday. And the groundbreaking for Burl has been postponed due to weather tomorrow.
Supposed to be tomorrow, yeah.
It was supposed to be tomorrow at 11 o'clock. And Bill, anything else to add there?
No, we, we have a meeting tomorrow morning, assuming we can all get to it, that we'll, we'll try to reschedule and figure out the best next date. I mean, it's ceremonial, we have broken ground, but, you know, it's something we'd like to do at the beginning versus, you know, halfway through.
We're not delaying any work.
No, no.
We also have to wait for the MSBA because this is part of...
This is part of their process.
Their part of the process.
I drove by the other day, it was kind of like cool to see that everything's dug up.
Thank you.
Thursday night is going to be an exciting night. I was unaware of this, but Thomas Davis has made me aware that the first induction of the International Thespian Honor Society will take place at 7:00 at Foxborough High School Auditorium. There are 12 members of our classes here at high school. They have to excel and contribute to, in drama here, they have contributed in the community, and they have the grades. So, and I, I just asked, oh, the head of our English department, Dr. Shannon, I said, Shannon, are you aware of this? She said, no, I'm not. How very exciting. Shannon herself was part of the International Thespian Honor Society when she was in high school. And for some reason, that's one theater thing that has eclipsed me all these years. And it's going to be with, held in conjunction with the art.
Very good.
Induction of the Honor Society. So those two things are going to happen this.
Well, congratulations to all of the new inductees. That's great.
I think that's exciting, yes.
But isn't there another little part to that that connects to you?
Well, actually, there is, because I was the person who in 1975 started the musicals at the Ahearn School, and then, of course, I directed here, and I taught a few drama classes. Although Thomas thought I might have been head of the drama department, that was always John Callahan. I just directed musicals. And then I directed four in the community theater, so he has invited me to be an honorary member. And I asked him, are you sure that's not honorary member? You do want me as an honorary member? He said, yes, honorary. And the other person he has invited, who is, in as, as insatiable as I am about theater and young people and celebrating, is Mrs. Laura Canfield, who will be the other honorary inductee.
I wish I wasn't going to be away at a conference.
So, 7:00.
Excellent.
I think that's great.
That is wonderful, that is great.
But I don't, I cannot imagine living all those, and I didn't even know about, see?
You live and learn.
Live and learn.
That's fantastic. Anybody else for Other Matters, Allison?
I will just share, just because it came up at school committee last time, that we had scheduled a phenomenal visit to Sandwich Public Schools to see Project Lead the Way tomorrow.
Oh, no.
So we will start the process of rescheduling, which should be very fun.
You don't want to drive through that?
What? We had five teachers going, and I, that's, yeah.
No way.
No.
Well, good luck with the rescheduling.
Thank you.
Good. Anyone else?
I had the pleasure of attending the VIT auction.
Oh, good.
My first, and it was just...
Was it your first? I didn't know that.
It was, yeah, I was always busy on that night. It was an amazing event and just, all the work, all the work that goes into planning that.
Yes.
It's phenomenal.
Well, thank you for going.
And the experience was great, and just, I'm so grateful to all the people who volunteer countless hours to put on.
It was great.
Put it on.
I mean, the volunteer force in, in the community and support for our schools, Foxborough is so fortunate.